America and to the public which stands one nation under God in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Couple of housekeeping things, the Kevin Cooper piece has been removed from the agenda, so we will not be discussing that one tonight if you're here for that one. I wanted to let you know upfront, it's been pulled from the agenda, so that one's not on the books. Also, I'd like to take a moment publicly to thank Sheila Reeves, our outgoing auditor for her years of service, not only in the auditor's office, but in the health department. She's a good one, she's gonna be, does her big shoes, and it's gonna be hard to fill those shoes, so I just wanted to publicly say thank you to her. She's been a big help to me and my family, and I'm sure everyone else in Owen County. Suzanne, if you would do roll call, please.
Donna McIntyre?
Here.
Robbie Cooper?
Here.
Norm Warner?
Here.
Bill Purcell? Kenneth Sebastian? Bob Curry?
Here.
Mike Swafford?
Here.
Amy Kakespear.
Okay, old business, Jeremy Hobbs, Foster Farms, final plat. Jeremy, you got anything?
No, I'm gonna head and amend it, they got the letters that you guys requested from the water company and the power company.
Right.
Everything else should be in order.
I also see that you're looking at maybe putting in another access road straight down from where these folks live.
Yeah, right there. I mow it up right now, you can kinda see if you go down there where it's gonna be.
Have any idea when that might be?
Soon, right away.
Right away?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so this is a final plat, so I do have to read out of the Owen County zoning and subject control ordinance, section twelve dot ten. After the approval of the final plat, a proposed final plat shall be filed with the plan commission within two years of the approval of the preliminary, preliminary plat. Final plat shall include all of the following, and this is twelve eleven. Boundary lines by meets and bounds that provide a survey of the tract, the existing or recorded streets that intersect the boundaries of the tracks, distance and direction to the nearest established street corners or monuments, street names, complete curve noted for all curves, location type, material and size of the monuments and lot markers, plans and specifications for improvements required by this ordinance, restrictive covenants running with the land, certification of, by a registered professional engineer or registered land surveyor that the plat adequately reflects his survey, deed of the dedication of streets and other properties for public use, and certification of improvements or completion So, in our last meeting, we didn't have all that done, but we're gonna go through it here. So, boundary lines by the meets, bounds that provide a survey of the tract with dimensions and angles, that's all in the plat. Existing recorded streets that intersect the boundaries of the tracks, that's on the plat. Distance and direction to the nearest established street corners or official monuments is on the plat. Street names, Foster Farms, and I do see that we have the street names written in here on the preliminary plat.
Yeah.
And I was asking Suzanne about address changes, and you said, once, if this is approved, then we can proceed with that.
Yeah, once we do that, we can proceed with that first change.
I do have a question about the road connections, have you guys had any more conversations on that, between these folks and you?
We have not.
Okay, is that something we're gonna still try to accomplish?
Yes, whatever we need to do, as soon as we're ready.
Cause I know that was one of the questions we had last time, was that connection there, the easement.
Yep.
Did, I would like to get that squared away.
Okay.
About the same time you get that connecting road there, then you can just take care of all of it.
I'll have the angles get right along.
Okay, all right. Complete curve noted for all curves, it's on the plat. Location type, material and size of monuments and lot markers is on the plat. Plans and specifications for the improvement required by the ordinance, that's on the plat. While we're on that, remember, you told me the first thing you were gonna do was take care of Steve's drainage by putting in that retention pond.
Drainage right off the bat.
Right there on the corner, so that we can shut that water down, or at least control it better than it is today.
Yep, we're gonna put in our dry line and all our ditches connecting it and structures right away.
And I want you to let me know, okay, fair enough?
I can keep you posted also.
Yeah, either one of you, sir, I can run out there, I don't mind to come out, I, that's, I will work this job, so you guys get ahold of him and let me know, once we get a rain, once he's got that in place, we'll see what's going on out there, and then we may have to get back with Jeremy and have some sort of gentleman's agreement on getting it taken care of, but I'm not forgetting you. We've, and I've been on this retention pond and get going, everybody in here knows that, I want that done first, so that we're, we're taking care of you and Concord Road and Mr., I am not gonna be able to get it out. Mr. You. All right. Plans and specifications for improvements, as we just talked about, that restricted covenants running with the land, we have a copy of that on the plat. Certification by the registered professional engineer and registered land surveyor that the plat adequately reflects the survey, we have that, and it is stamped. Deed of dedication of streets and other properties for public use, this provision does not require that the streets or easements must be dedicated to the public, but we have declared streets, we have them named now, and subdivision will have an HOA, which I've read those, and then certification of improvement or completion bond on file, and you have that, correct? Okay. All right, commission, guys got anything before we hear from the public?
Thank you, Sheldon Bill.
So, hearing nothing from the commission and from Mr. Hobbs, anyone from the public who'd like to speak on this subdivision?
Go ahead. I just have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
What is it exactly we're supposed to talk to chat about on the driveway or the road?
Well, currently, if I understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, I'm just going off what I remember, you guys don't have, I mean, you're connected to that road, but there's really no connection to that road, is that correct?
Yeah, I'm gonna give them an easement to the road.
You are giving them an easement, okay.
That's what I thought.
So, that section bow is gonna be where we put in that up there?
Uh, yep.
Right, so if you look right here, he's gonna extend, this is you here, guys, right, over here, he's gonna extend that out to Mount Carmel?
Yes.
So you've got a straight shot down?
Yep.
He says he's mowing it now, I don't know.
Right, he actually drive along the grassy for some people, too.
So we're gonna extend that?
Yeah, that's gonna be an entrance also.
All right, now we will need to get a culvert in there.
Yep, that's fine, I actually, the first road we put in, I purchased a culvert from the county, and they came out with the backhoe and the pipe and everything, and he said I didn't need one, and took it everything back, and I got a refund, so, and that was the gentleman that's here usually.
Bob, you're a foundationer, isn't there an ordinance that covers that?
Well, I, because I asked for a driveway permit, and they said the only permit was with the county culvert, so I went ahead and paid three hundred dollars for it, and they caught, they come out with the whole crew, and we were gonna put the one in at first, and he said, well, there's no need for a culvert here, and then took it back and gave me a refund, and that was the.
It's a natural level, man, and that's a drainage.
I thought it needed one, but he said it didn't.
I don't know.
Isn't there a continuous ditch that runs from the one that you've got right now, all the way down to past you and beyond?
Where's, which road is it you're talking about?
Right here, Mike, so.
The one that I'm coming on Foster Farms, I purchased the culvert for that, and.
One minute by Pastor Milton, said that I did not need one, took it back, and they had the whole crew there and did it. I mean, we was there, I had it all paid, sealed, signed, sealed, delivered, and he said we did not need one, and took it back to the shop, hauled the backhoe back to the
shop, and gave me a refund.
Well, and I may be wrong, but I was thinking the ordinance says any connection to a county road has to have a culvert.
I, I, like I said, I purchased it, and they were supposed to, the county puts them in, you gotta purchase the pipe, and I did that, and like I said, he gave me a refund and went back home.
I think that's fairly level right there, but there is a hill.
That's the top right there, yeah, it's, when we did it, it was really flat, and I think it needed one to get it, but.
I think we had to have a culvert.
The commissioner, Mr. Milton, yes, sir.
That was a guideline for the county.
Right, because if the, let's say for instance, he wanted that road taken over by the county, the first thing they're gonna ask for is a culvert in there.
The county's wanted to tell me nothing.
I understand that, but I'm confused now.
I get my ears.
Subject.
But I'd be glad if it was a new one.
I'd have to bring a check.
Okay.
And I'd be glad to repurchase the pipe if they'd like to come in.
Yeah, it doesn't sound like you're, it's you that has the issue with it.
I'm fine with it.
Okay.
If we just put it in there subject to our approval.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
I don't, I don't know how far we can go if our legal aspect, I would say.
I mean, if the highway department says he doesn't need it.
There wouldn't be anything to do with it.
Get it, I'm writing.
I would ask you.
Jim, care to weigh in on this one? We have an ordinance that says it requires.
You're gonna have the final plat, if you wanna put that in, it's one of the patients.
Jeremy, let's get, let's get it in there.
That's fine.
Let's get it in there.
The one at Foster Farms also.
I'd like them both in there, I want, I want it to be continuous from one side to the other, so that water does not set there.
That's what I thought, too.
And goes on down the hill and across like it's supposed to.
On board.
I mean, I'm no drainage expert.
We'll try it again.
To me, it's, somebody hates me in there.
Just try it a couple of days.
Okay, I have those, totally sidetracked myself, all right.
You guys make the most.
Well, let's get through the public, and then we'll make.
Tell me you wanna go ahead and check the public, see if that's subject to their approval, if we do that, if they're like, all right, then.
I mean, you were the one speaking on, do you not want the culvert in there?
Oh, no, we want the culvert.
Okay.
Um, just another question, the houses that are gonna be built on that road in front of us, um, will they be facing our homes?
Yes.
So their driveways will be on that road?
Yeah, but it's gonna be staggered, so it's not gonna be driveway to driveway, it's gonna be staggered.
So the homes in this new subdivision will still be sharing that road?
Yes, that one, yeah, four more houses.
Why do we have to have a different access, I'm just really.
Well, I mean, you guys were talking about having a address update, and.
Just remain, number of number of changes.
Well, we gotta have some sort of.
Right.
I agree. I have a level issue.
I mean, we can do it, or we can not do it, I mean, I'm open to it, it's a real simple process to put one in there, it's only a few hundred feet.
Well, my, I live in lock, lock.
Okay.
And, and my concern is, who maintains the road, what does it done since it's, it's not gonna be a county approved road, or is it gonna be a county approved?
Well, not at the beginning for sure, but he does have an HOA in place, which covers the road. Now, there's a fee involved with that, correct?
Yeah, that only kicks in after I pay, but.
After you pay.
So I'm gonna keep, now keep it a.
We pay, you'll pay. We're not, we don't have any.
No, we don't have to.
No.
We're gonna talk to you guys about it, if you'd like.
So what happens if we don't buy it? I mean, we can't count it out.
We have an HOA.
It's, it's a access, you have to have.
I just said it would be favored two hundred a year, totally, or nothing.
I mean, what, how much is it?
Two hundred.
He said two hundred a year.
Two fifty.
Two hundred a year, oh, okay, two hundred a year, I could probably live with two hundred a year, I thought it was gonna be two hundred a month.
Oh, no. Well, inflation, you know.
I've been really close to two hundred dollars.
Yeah, that's not bad.
A year. I actually, everybody would be on one that's paid, or on one that's taken care of, and I don't have, and I don't have to deal with that later in my life.
And pavement's one of my pet peeves, along with controlling water up there, we gotta get that paved, we gotta get a lot of these paved.
Now, how you gonna, how you gonna have that, how you gonna make that road competitive, or, or Monroe, I'm saying, how you gonna make that road county compatible, when their roads are just flats, you can't put culverts under our rocks, just keep, not right, how do you do this?
Ten foot culvert?
Yeah.
Put a culvert underneath that, water's just gonna set there, and then you're gonna.
When I got to now, it's not draining across the top of the drive, that's another thing about, the gravel actually lets the water perk down a little bit more than the pavement does, so I didn't wanna get ahead of my ditching with paving it without the, you know, proper drainage, so, you know, leaving it gravel is still porous, and it will actually perk down a little bit, so, that's why I just haven't been taping it, you know, a little bit at a time, so that we, and I'm gonna do a pretty good job.
Sounds, sounds like as far as neighbors go, we have something in place, I, you know, if, obviously if these things don't happen, then that's when you get ahold of the building department, she'll let me know.
Is there gonna be a bond on season?
Uh, he already has a bond, we covered that. And it's on file, correct, the bond?
Yeah.
Bond's on file, so.
I'm opposed to development, I knew it would have, I just like to see it so good.
Right, well, and we're all on the same boat, we'd like to see it be successful and be what we want it to be, not just thrown together, none of us want that, including Mr. Hobbs. So, yes, sir, you want to speak?
Yeah, I just wanna say that, still my pleasure to work with you guys, I talked with you the last time you were here, I really felt that I was listened to and heard. In my experience, I've been through a number of zoning meetings, a number of alliances, and the deals we made in a restaurant somewhere, the steaks and beers, but at least I felt I was heard here, that's number one. Number two, I was impressed by what you had to say, you started off this meeting by saying, let's be good neighbors, and I thought about that, I, I mean, I'm a good neighbor, I think, but I thought, well, what does that mean, what's it mean to be a good neighbor? That means I look out for others, it means I respect their property, it means I notify them in case there's an alert, something's going on, you kind of, you wanna care who they are, and that struck me, like, your value system and mine are the same. The builder, I, he's a good guy, I'm sure, God knows, every dime that he is able to amass, he earns it, I did construction work, so I know, it's a hell of a lot of effort and work to make a dollar. Whether or not the homes are built there, it doesn't matter to me, that's, that's, that's your, your guys' decision, the important thing is, are we gonna be good neighbors? I don't know, do you own that field?
My father-in-law, yeah.
Okay.
No.
Yeah. You know, Gary owns a lot of property, and a good neighbor will say to you, hey, here are the risks, now there's some risk to that property, you guys know about that, a good neighbor, before you buy it, would say, I'm not gonna withhold, I'll be forthright, I can tell you what's going on. The people that are gonna buy the houses on that field, are you gonna be forthright, are we gonna be good neighbors, let them know, there's a risk here, you're gonna have to provide special insurance, so that your foundation does get away, it's called sinkhole insurance, that, that you'll be protected, if they don't know that, then they, they're not gonna be covered. I'm saying this, it's been my pleasure to work with you guys.
We don't wanna buy our house, I didn't know if they were bought.
Oh, you got a sinkhole? What do you have?
We have a sinkhole behind our house, and I didn't know if they were bought.
Yeah, it's, it's a dilemma, it's, it's, it's a gamble.
And I acquired a mountain code, or, and they said I couldn't get it, I checked.
Oh.
One point on that, we had soil scientists out there on every lot, and he said it's some of the best soil in the county, in the, in the ground in the county, and if it was like a sink situation, or even close to the karst area of soil, you'd have different soil changes before it went to rock, and we're far from that, and we had, we had twenty-four soil tests out there at great expense, to make sure that we could handle septic system on each lot, so there's been engineers, scientists, and, you know, surveyors out there, so.
Sounds to be doing it right, right.
And there was a very intense report that we got early on, that covered all the different types of karst, this and karst all that, you know, Salisbury, and I mean, it's, it's interesting, it's a lot of the towns around is the karster named after them, which is, I thought was interesting, and that property that it is, went for sale down by the McCarry's Creek School, they had all that listed for that, too, that's becoming more and more common for property, I guess, to have it looked at for that kind of thing, and it's probably because of what you're saying. But, anyone else on this piece, before we take it to the vote?
I'll run the latter to the.
This, this one here?
Yes, I'd like you to at least read it.
Read it into the record? Planning and zoning, this is from Steve Beaumont, and this is dated May the seventeenth of twenty twenty-two. Planning and zoning board, with the pictures that I have provided about the flooding and that the Foster Farms property being known karst feature populated with sinkholes, that is in a high-risk area for any development, and that access to my lake cabin is being flooded almost every storm we have from said property, that all board members should take a closer look at all these matters, please have all pictures shown to all the members of the planning and zoning board, thank you, Stephen Beaumont. And we did get those in an email, and I've looked at them, and like I said, I, I have high hopes. His, his soil report is, I don't know if you guys have seen it or not, I've read the whole thing, it's very intense, and it covers all the different types of soil that are up there in that field, and there's a bunch of them, there's like, about seven or eight different ones, and the drainage expert that he brought in was very good about the amount of water that was coming down that hill, towards, and right down Steve's road, and that's why they decided to put that retention pond right there at the top of the hill on the corner, to help take care of you, and I, I have high hopes that it will, that's why, once we get going on this, I'd like to know how it's going.
Right, will the pond be put in before?
Yeah, that's the first thing he's doing, cause that's, that was his agreement with me when we first started all this.
Can't wait.
Yeah, as soon as, as soon as he starts moving there, we're gonna get that thing done, cause right now, you're still suffering from what you've been suffering with for thirty-four years, which is the water coming off that field and down your road.
Right, so.
Not just his problem, farmer field, or whatever it was, it's still been putting water down there, we're gonna try to take care of some of that.
Does that property, that retention pond being owned by somebody then?
That'll be his development, yeah.
And he takes care of it.
It's, it's, it's part of the.
It'll be a drainage easement?
Yeah, it'll, it'll be, all right, it'll be a, essentially a piece of property owned by the whole development.
Will be fenced?
It'll have to be.
It'll be dried most of the time, is it dry retention pond, it's not gonna hold water until it gets accessible, that water's.
If, if, if we start running into a situation where the water stays over a certain amount of time, then it has to be by ordinance, it would have to be fenced, but if it's a dry, then nothing, it doesn't have to be fenced, so we'll see.
It's just water about kids.
Yeah, oh, I get you, I get you, cause there's already some out there, and there'll be more. Okay, anyone else on this?
Norm, before you, do you bother just a couple procedures?
Yes, sir.
Notice things, Suzanne, this is under Indiana Code thirty-six dash seven dash four seven of six, this is just a notice checklist, was the applicant, the person due to petition, were they notified the day of this hearing?
Yes.
Was, was notice given by publication in accordance to Indiana Code five dash three dash one?
Yes, it was.
Was due notice provided to all interested parties at least ten days before the date set for this hearing?
Yes, it was.
And was the planning department supposed to maintain a sign on the property for at least ten days prior to the hearing?
Yes, it was.
And were all interested parties notified by certified now?
Yes, they were.
Okay, now that would satisfy all the notice requirements, now we focus on the technical.
Okay. All right, folks, you've, you've heard the findings of the plan commission, you've heard the notifications, requirements by us, we've had the public hearing, the drawings are in front of you, you've seen, you've heard the letter, you've seen the pictures, so I would entertain a motion of something.
I'll make a motion, go ahead and accept the final plat as is.
All right, can I make a friendly amendment?
Sure.
For the culvert to be checked on and put in, and the retention pond to be the first thing you do, okay? Good, all right, with that being said, we do have a motion with a friendly amendment and a proper second, all in favor?
All right.
Anybody opposed? All right, one, two, three, six, oh.
And then, Norm, you have been the second motion for the findings of the plan commission.
All right, now we have the findings of the plan commission, and that's the eleven things that I read through earlier, and you need me to read them again, or can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Donna, motion by Donna?
Second.
Second by Mike Swafford? All right, so we do have a motion and a proper second, all in favor of the findings of the plan commission, go ahead.
All right.
Six, oh.
And then, Norm, just a point of reference, like, now that that's been voted on, it is the absolute responsibility of the subdivider, that there's a thirty-day time period to file this final plat with the recorder, so that's under twelve thirteen and thirty-six seven four seven ten, very important that that's done in the next thirty days, so that it's be done by the person that actually does the subdivision.
Okay, Mr. Hobbs, that's on you, sir.
I'll be there tomorrow.
Before you, you need to sign.
I'll go ahead and sign it, okay, good enough. All righty, congratulations, Mr. Hobbs, folks.
Thanks, everybody.
I'm serious, I wanna know, okay, it's not, it's not we're done with it and move on, I wanna know, so that we, because when I say I wanna be good neighbors, I'm, I'm serious, good neighbors, okay.
I'm out there, I'm no concise.
I like company, I get lonely at a lot, so.
Okay. Number six on the agenda, new business, BCL one LLC, James Ruder, rezone application.
We're paying.
All right, step forward, sir. Okay.
It's BCH one, though, I don't see. H one, I don't see, yeah.
H one?
It's okay.
That's okay. All right, can you run us through, I have no drawings or anything, so.
Right, so we, we're still kinda trying to figure out what we're trying to do as far as the size of the structure, so we're trying to turn. So, we're trying to turn the existing home into apartments. Okay, so we have nine units right now for the house and the pool bar. So, we need to change the sound and of course the residential plans. So that's where we're at right now.
Uh, you, I, I hear you, but your way, that's, in my opinion,
Okay.
that comes later. And we do have a realtor here on, on the panel, or the commission. So he can speak to this better than I can, but any type of multifamily, which is what you're looking for, there's gonna be some state requirements on all the construction, the sewage.
Right.
The connection to the highway is gonna have to be looked at, cuz I think you have to have an acceleration lane when you have that many problems. Correct?
Yes.
You're also gonna have to have off-site, off-street parking for this, because you're talking multifamily. There's a lot of steps here that have to be taken way outside of getting it rezoned. What I don't wanna do is rezonate. You decide, wow, that's a lot of stuff, and, and stop on it or sell it. And then we've already rezoned it, and now the sky's the limit for someone else. You see what I'm saying?
No, I, I see what you're saying. And we've already started the, the soil sample test, which is actually being submitted today, uh, to the state. So that'll let us know what we can do, um, as far as the size and how many units we can have there. So that's that. It's twenty and a half acres, so parking isn't an issue at all.
It, it isn't. You've got plenty of room for it, yes.
Right.
It's not there yet, and
Right.
the connection to the highway is a problem too. So, I mean, that's just my three cents, but I will go through this multi-
Okay.
-family reading here. As soon as I find what I've done with it. Sorry. Got too many piles up here. Okay, so out of the Owen County zoning and subdivision control ordinance, multifamily development standards. Multifamily, including apartment, duplexes, condominiums, shall be defined as a permanent building designed and used exclusively for residential occupancy containing two or more dwelling units per building. Permitted uses, multifamily dwelling, accessory buildings and uses incidental to the used permit located on same lot, temporary construction buildings, apartments, condominiums, parking lots needed to fulfill the parking requirements for existing or permitted use. Now, I would behoove you to get ahold of the copy of the ordinance from Suzanne. Because there's very strict coverage for off-street parking, how much you have to have, for how many units you have, uh, the width of your roads. And then the state's gonna have a whole nother layer on top of that for the structural pieces, okay? And all of that needs to be taken into account, just to save you some time and ultimately some time.
Right.
Duplexes, home occupation, apartment standards, minimum lot frontage on public roads shall be a hundred and twenty feet. You're good there, I think. Minimum lot size, see subdivision control ordinance. So, you said it's twenty acres. Are you planning on subdividing this at all?
No, it's not being subdivided at all.
Okay. Um, minimum setbacks, uh, front yard hundred and twenty feet on primary and secondary arterial, eighty feet on major and minor collectors, and sixty feet on all other roads. Uh, you're good on the side road. You're good on the highway. So, and all of this is in the ordinance, and I would, like I said, I would get a copy of it if I was you and start reading through it. And everything goes with multifamily. Uh, maximum building height is another thing. Shall not exceed two and a half stories or thirty-five feet. I, how, how many stories is in that place?
It's only two. Well, it's only two. But the house itself, I think it's, I'm trying to remember, three, three stories for the house itself.
So, it would need to be under thirty-five feet, or we'd have to get a variance for that. Uh, minimum ground level, uh, square footage, uh, single story six fifty, two-story six fifty per unit, uh, story and a half, six fifty square feet per unit. So each unit's gotta be six hundred and fifty square feet minimum.
Right.
And, uh, two parking spaces for every unit required for all apartments, and at least four additional parking spaces are required for apartment complexes with clubhouses. I don't think you're gonna have a clubhouse, but you might.
No.
Uh, no parking spaces are required for recreational areas. Signs, one nameplate is allowed per building and shall not exceed ten feet square. One freestanding sign is allowed per entrance to the development. Uh, but each shall, signs shall not exceed ten feet square. Uh, billboards and advertising signs are not allowed. Temporary real estate signs, construction and contractor signs shall not exceed two in number per lot and be, or be more than six feet square. This thing goes on and on. Site design and community impacts, road hierarchy and how roads surrounding the site are used to connect the site to its surroundings. Connecting development directly to a major highway is discouraged, and that's exactly what you're gonna be doing. Which is why you need to get the, uh, state involved, like now, to find out what you're gonna do out there, correct, guys?
Even before I get it zoned?
If, if they won't give you a permit to get off the road there, you're done there. Because there's no other way around it. You have to be able to get people off the highway and into your place. And the thing is, for us to make a decision, you have to actually be able to move forward. And you can't do that if you don't have a permit for that highway. So, uh, I think that's probably your first thing beyond, beyond your soil test. And then your septic's another situation where you're gonna have to, you know, a septic, put a tank for a three-bedroom place is much, much different than a seven-unit apartment. Sidewalks, I don't think that applies. Conservation of energy allows business owners to save money and save money. Uh, landscaping, parking lights, buffering and screening, employing local labor by using Owen County workers, so more money is brought into our community and commuting costs can be lowered, and that's strongly encouraged. We can't force you to do that, but we, you know, we'd like you to do it local if you can. Uh, use of the products made in Owen County. Don't know how well you'd be able to do that, but
Right.
Uh, contacts and environmental impacts, subdivisions built adjacent to conflicting land uses. So you're gonna be trying to build right next to an agricultural field. There's some housing up behind you, I believe, and to the, will be the south, southeast.
Northeast?
Northeast.
Northeast.
Northeast. Yeah. Phillips Road, that area up there. Um, any plans to have any other road come in or out of there besides the one you do currently have?
I mean, we're gonna have to either expand that, or we're gonna have to put a whole another one in there. But we figured that we'd have to do that with another permit anyways. I didn't know that was affected in zoning at all.
Well.
Access. The access.
Yeah, our goal was, I, which, I don't know the width of the road yet, but we're gonna bring an engineer in and tell us how big we have to make it. I, I didn't know that.
Well, your ordinance, current ordinance is eighteen feet wide minimum. If you ever wanted the county to take the road, it would need to be at least twenty. Just telling you upfront.
Right.
That's, that's what I know from here.
I thought it was wider.
It's twenty, right, Bob?
Uh, twenty feet for the road, but you got forty-foot right away.
Forty-foot easement?
Right away?
Yeah.
Those utilities stuff has to go down inside the road.
I mean, you know. I, I see what you're saying, but I also, to me, we're kind of at a, a halt pattern until we can get some of this other stuff taken care of now.
So, right now?
I'm, I'm, I'm one person. This is a little basic, so.
But the only issue right now would be just the highway, the entry point.
That's one of, that, you're, you're, you've got your soil thing coming, so that's good.
Right.
Your septic's not to be looked at.
Right.
Parking, obviously, but that's, that can come when you do your road.
Right.
I know we needed an initial plan, and all I saw was like an area photo of the land, which is very similar to what.
Right. We, we do need to know, we need to see a drawing or layout of what you're doing.
Okay, so, right, okay. I didn't know that, I didn't know that affected zoning.
I mean, well, because we have to know what's going, we can't just rezonate haphazard without knowing what.
Well, the reason why we were rezoning in the first place would be for the house itself. Since there's gonna be nine units, I, I have to have that rezoned simply just for that, right? I mean.
So nine units, seven hundred everything?
Right.
From three, four to seven to nine?
No, there's seven for the house, and there's two for the pool bar.
Okay. So the house, each one of those will have to have nine hundred and fifty square feet. Or six hundred?
Six hundred. Right, which it has.
So you've got it.
It's a forty-two-hundred-square-foot house. That's a big one.
It's a big house.
It's a big house.
I've never been out there.
I've, I've been in it.
Yeah, I've been by it, but I-
No, sure, I were finding it. I've been in it.
Right.
So the, the state requirements for subdividing a place, where does he even, where does he go to get that information to someone?
I thought I was on the right path.
Yep.
Or if we can rezonate it, and then I-
Can't rezonate until it's-
Jump on that one next.
I don't think you can rezonate until it's already been taken through the state.
So let's say we rezoned that, and then all of a sudden we go up in the north and someone else can set.
Well, if they're able to, to get the permitting part, then they just move on to the next step anyways, right? I mean, if they're able to do it, let's say, i- it's too big a project, and, you know, I sell or whatever, right? But somebody else comes along, they do the exact same thing I'm getting ready to do. It, right now, we're just kinda delaying it. Am I right, or?
Doesn't it have to approval from the state of Indiana to do what he's doing?
I really.
And we're trying to bypass that? Is that what's happening?
I really.
No, 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 we're not bypassing anything. No, I'm gonna go through it.
You're getting me confused, because that's the way you're laying it out.
No, what I'm trying to do is-
But he already told you that you have to go to the state before we-
Well, and that, where, through the state, though? Like I was, when I went to, for the building department, when we talked, I thought this was the plan. I thought this is what I was supposed to do.
This, this is a plan for the county.
Right.
But when you're subdividing like you're doing, you've gotta go to the state for the actual blueprint, some plans, as far as I know.
All life family housing has some different requirements.
When you do multifamily, it's a whole nother set of rules that are involved.
Okay, I thought that was only initially for the septic, though. That's what, that's why we, that's why we're doing that. So we are going to septic, and that's going through the state.
Right.
Um, so we have that part down.
Right, but when you go to subdivide that, they're gonna wanna talk to you again about structural, structural and-
They're gonna have to have a sprinkler system, I think.
Right, we are.
There's a whole bunch of engineering things that that house wasn't designing.
And, and you and I spoke about that, that, that you have to get a, a design release from the state that, that, that lays out that they approve electrical-
Right.
plumbing and all of that stuff for the apartment.
Yes.
And you need to do that also for the duplex as well. So those things have to be done, but, I mean, the county can't issue a building permit until he's multifamily, either.
That's.
So, at least. So, I, I don't know. I, I, but I can't-
I think, I think what he has to do is go back to the state like he suggested. And then, cuz we're, our end are tied. We can't do anything with it, because you have to have approval from the state.
I think the first one on that is that access to the-
That's what we're trying to do.
What's that?
Access on the road. About the access of subject falls.
Yeah, I think the place starts with the Department of Transportation, make sure he can get a road in there, or an access road in there.
You can have the best design in the world, but the state's not gonna let you turn into it. It doesn't really matter.
Right, well, I, I agree. I agree. I do agree with you on that.
Yeah.
Um, I, I just, whenever we first went to this, I thought this was the first step.
Yeah.
And then, I know there's more steps along the way. The soil, the septic's another situation, which we were told is gonna be good, but um, we also have to make sure that that's in front, but we're trying to complete one step at a time.
Right.
That's what we're doing right now.
Jim? So, and I know you may not have answered to this either, but the zoning ahead of any kind of state approval for the multifamily unit itself, we don't have any kind of drawing or plat or anything. I really don't feel comfortable rezoning without any kind of drawings or anything to go on.
Well, that's within the sole, and sole discretion of the plant commission. You have five elements that you have to consider on, it's a shadowy, quite reasonable, uh, regard to, one is the comprehensive plan, how this would fit, what are the current conditions, character of structures and uses of each district, the most desirable uses for the land in each district, the conservation of property values in the jurisdiction, and responsible development and growth. So that's the starting point of it. You are purely an advisory board. You can vote gay, nay, or table. The difference here is, once this is rezoned, it is from agriculture. So another step is, you as a plant commission on the part of K of the, what you just read, prime farmland should not be built upon, except as the last resort to preserve the value of property. So one of the questions would be answered as far as, one is the agricultural use. That has to definitely be, uh, a consideration of you as a plant commission. The second, if you're going to make a res, a recommendation, or you're going to put any contingencies, you're asking very legitimate questions as far as road use, structure. If this is granted, I understand it's both, well, then now we do that, but this is within the sound discretion of the plant commission to ask these questions and try and get at least a minimal understanding. You can make your recommendation contingent upon, but respectfully, one, if I'm, if I'm, if I'm disspeaking, then everyone should tell me. But I don't see any plans or structures or documents or anything for you that may or may not assist you to make a decision. Uh, you also have the authority to table this for one month if you were looking for additional information. I believe you've already paid the fee, is that correct?
Right.
So, I guess the problem be if, if it would, I'm not saying it should be, but if there was a no vote, then it's a no vote, and then you've got to fee. If you were looking at the possibility of tabling this for thirty days, and you had specific information you would like to pass, that's well within the authority of the plant commission also.
Okay.
Suzanne, can you pull up the assessment sheet on that?
On the assessment sheet?
I just don't remember that house being that big. That's 'cause I see a lot lower right a little bit.
Right, right there, it's-
Forty-five sixty?
Forty-five sixty.
That's not counting the garage.
No, no, that is just including the first floor, second floor, and the first floor a little attached. That's the only things that are counted in that, that total square footage.
Right.
The-
The basement of the third floor.
Yeah, usually the, uh, the attic is counted, but since it's considered not finished, it's, you know, it's counted in the total, but counted as finished.
Commission totally make any decision off. Since you started the hearing, do you mind if we can just go through a couple procedures, just with a notice? Certain this is just currently notice requirements are required for every, every hearing. Plant commission, this is under Indiana Code thirty-six, seven, six, six, four. Uh, before a plant commission would certify the proposal, whether it's favorable or disfavorable, you must hold the power of hearing, which is being conducted right now. The plant commission shall give notice of the hearing, so Suzanne, just wanna make sure that these seven did occur. Has a notice been placed in the newspaper under Indiana Code five dash three dash one?
Yes, it was.
Did that notice include the time and place of the hearing?
Yes, it was.
Did it have a geographic area subject to the zone? You did not have to do the, the maps or bounds.
Right, yes.
Uh, was there a description of the post-change in the zone maps for agricultural, multifamily?
Yes.
Uh, was, was written that there is a place, the building department, where the copy of the proposal on file for examination before the hearing?
Yes.
And the written objections to the proposal were filed, could be filed with the secretary yourself before the hearing?
Yes.
Were there in fact any written, uh, either favorable or unfavorable written recommendations?
No, there were not.
Okay, uh, and that oral comments concerning the proposal would be heard?
Mm-hmm.
And then finally, that this hearing may be continued from time to time as necessary?
Yes.
And then, uh, were any, did you notice, were interested parties like ten days before the hearing?
Yes, they were.
Was that soon enough? Play that search right now.
Yes, it was.
Okay, plant commission, all of the requirements of thirty-six, seven, six, four have been tested.
Okay.
It's under the house. Now, even the, the house.
Even where the house is set.
The house is set in home days.
Which it's been there for thirty years.
It's been there forever. I mean, it was decrepit, and we're turning in more housing for Owen County that we need so desperately.
It's the only house I know that fits in with Dummer. I saw him about the Cadillac that was built in all the years. That house has been being built in the last-
It has. When we took it on, the inside wasn't, there's several, it's not even done. So I mean, it's, it's just gonna sit there.
Right. Okay, well, thank you. I'm gonna see if there's any public comment and then.
Okay, I understand.
Okay, so uh any public comment on this proposal?
Yeah, Mr. President, I've got several questions actually. I'm one of the property owners. Um you've addressed several of my questions. Um number one, I had, I was gentleman sitting before before you left, was talking about the neighborly, yeah, we're talking up here, this, this, he appears to talk about scurrying things. Um the way I found out about this situation was on Facebook because the apartments went up for lease. So it looks like lots of things were not addressed or steps were not taken properly. Um before that went around, I'm not saying gentleman trying to scurty it there or whatever, but it looks like there's a lot of steps that were not taken appropriately. Um what what if I can ask, I'm a plan, not right, but I'm not gonna ask you, like I'm told. What what is the plan for the property? Is it just this? Is it just the house itself?
No, so the plan is, to be completely honest with you, so the house and the pub aren't currently out. That those are, the goal is hopefully to be become apartments, and then we're gonna build another structure. Uh apartments, that's the goal. Uh we need housing in Owen County. I mean, houses going up, it could take years to build. Apartments, like I had to build one year, so.
Really, couldn't, I mean, or not, at least in my opinion, overly affordable for the cost of a studio, I think, was listed on Facebook for a thousand dollars, the project's one hundred and twelve dollars.
Yeah, that that includes utility, so it's definitely affordable. I mean, we we own OC Reynolds, which, I mean, we we manage a lot of different properties, so, I mean, I know the market pretty well.
It's also Owen County, and we're the.
Yeah, don't say that, because we have also, we have a lot of.
I can't afford that kind of break down, but that's neither.
Right.
But I think what you're talking about, one thing concerns me, thirty years of public safety, I, one of the biggest concerns I have is the highway entrance. Um I feel, I feel comfortable if the state, if the state doesn't give him access, I don't feel, I don't, I feel like, that's hell, I assume it's another project because you're not gonna get entry from the east, and you're not gonna get entry from the west, and you can't come in from the north, so I feel.
Ask me from highway.
At that point. Um you're talking about a septic system, so I just, again, assuming that you're discussing the septic system in size for this huge project.
Yes.
That factor.
Yes.
Does anyone have any idea that's on the cost or? Is that, and that was a floodplain at one time, is this still on the settlement, it's also that yet?
So the, it it, so the source sample was sent to the state, actually as of today, we, I had a prelimenary, but I don't, I'm just not rated, so there's a lot of steps to it, so.
And also, whoever's doing that for you or whatever yourself or member, have they addressed the?
No, it's not me doing this, so it's not just.
Have they addressed the um ambiguities or herself and add to this, then what what it is that goes through there, is that a pipeline or?
There is an AT&amp;T line through there.
What is it?
AT&amp;T.
No, it's a gas line. It's a major gas line.
A major gas line.
I think there's an AT&amp;T line there too. What?
I think.
It's an actual manufacturer.
I think there's.
Effect, because I mean, that's, that's a major, I know. And we have.
I I I don't think it's affected, but then again, after.
The green.
It's not one of the big structure.
Okay, the blue is the floodway, the flood drains is the green.
I honestly, I I I won't know until this generic she looks at that stuff, so. That's just, the goal, we have to add it.
Well, that, and then also, Mr. President, I think I heard you say, if the project goes through, and I'm not fighting my own shit, but I'm saying, I don't I'm not trying to stop the government from getting on the books, I'm not gonna light yet, more like hundred thousand houses.
Yeah.
On the lights and the noise, one of the biggest things that concern me in the beginning was your idea of going month on month, it's here. Again, I'm gonna tell you, I may offend somebody, but everybody has their opinion. Thirty years of public safety, month on month leases, is number trouble, that's one bringing issues, I, I feel comfortable with that. I'm hoping that this goes through for you, that you don't need that.
I mean, we we do, we do very extensive that one check, I mean, I assure you that, that's something we do. I mean, we check credit as far as criminal background and all that stuff. So I mean, is there any capability, and so that's the goal. Um that's what we have.
And then will there be, will there, is there a county requirement, is there some type of order between, like, what would be my property?
It's, it's in the ordinance that there would be bear, uh.
I mean, there's a fish line that's gonna go all the way through, oh, not fish, I'm sorry, there there's a tree line, a little creek here, and it goes right through, where's your property at?
Right here.
You're, oh, yeah, so I mean. We're not building in front here, what is it, so south, um.
So where would your new complex is be?
It's literally gonna be next to the house, that's the goal, on the uh so the east side of the house.
One more structure or two?
So I would love to build two more structures on there, but I don't believe we can. I think we're just gonna do a twelve-unit building right next to it. Uh that's, that's the plan right now, to build one structure right next to it, and it's there. So if you notice a tree line right here, and that that blocks everything off there, you can't even see the property from up there.
I know my property too, I can't see.
Okay, I understand that, but when we were out there, we were thinking that.
And then my my last question is, as far as I think one knows, which I now even from what I've already heard, is there any going to be an requirement, is there a requirement for handicap access or anything else, we'll have to make sure it's the current, it's a, a bad house.
Well, that would be, I would think part of the states.
State would mandate on that.
I would think the state's gonna be all over that. Yeah. Um. Anyone else on this?
I have a question. My my property is just directly above his.
Up here?
And.
The golf course?
One of the seven oh seven.
Right here.
Okay.
Yeah, right there, and I was wondering is, there gonna be free access to my property from his property through the woods?
Yeah, we have no intention on doing anything to the wood line, to the woods at all.
No fencing or anything?
No, we have no intention on doing that. I think Owen County, I heard some weird law where you have to, if one neighbor can require a fence, well. They both have to pay half.
That's a snake law.
Okay, well, yeah, the neighbors willing to pay half of it, yeah, of course.
And there, there again, that would be the neighbor thing, you know, if you guys decide you want a fence and you get with him and you guys are both okay with buying half of the fence.
Yeah.
Let's say knock yourself out, I mean, I I'm not gonna get involved in that.
Yeah, I guess my biggest concern is my son-in-law likes to hunt on property for deer.
Okay.
In deer season, and I just don't want that to be, you know, interrupted.
Right, well, I mean, if he's standing on your property, it wouldn't, it wouldn't interrupt it, uh he might have to be careful about firing in that direction, but he wouldn't have to do that right now.
Well, yeah, he is. Yeah.
So, I mean, unless I'm missing something.
There's plenty of woods in between our property.
Right, it looks like a pretty good haul there, I don't know how far it is.
It's a pretty big haul.
Well. Anything else, you guys? No, no. Okay. Um. Commission, anything?
First off, uh Jim mentioned, I have a K, I I do not consider the farmland crime farmland, that's pretty wet soil, which makes me really concerned by your septic issue, because that's wet ground.
Right, but we were told we're gonna have to drain, um we have to create a perimeter drain uh for it, so.
So I have, my point is, I think I have a K is not an issue on this property, so that's not a road problem. I think we need more information, particularly depends on the state. We have a housing problem, everybody knows. And we're trying to fill that, but for the sake of filling it and just not go through the proper chases or all, you know, we gotta do it right.
Right.
We can look several years ago where we had subdivisions and stuff that weren't done right. Almost spent all day in court Thursday for one of those, and.
Would you guys be opposed to making it, or agreeing if if I go and take that step, just so I don't have to, you know, crazy funk and schedule this thing again? Um it, I mean.
Can't do anything until it.
But I mean.
What what we, what we can do, and I'll just, I'll go ahead and make the motion, uh that we table this for more information from Mr. Ruder uh on his soil. I do want you to contact the state on the road, because that's gonna be a game breaker right there. If you can't get the connection to the road for a multi-unit, and they're gonna require you, I've, I'm thinking they're gonna require, and I don't wanna speak for the state, they're gonna require you to have a deceleration lane of some kind there. And that's gonna be expensive, and that's gonna be uh tough with that main line going through there and AT&amp;T. And you've seen how big the ditch is, you, I mean, you drop there every day.
I can interrupt, I think that would be the Seymour district that you need to contact.
Seymour district.
Seymour district, and they'll, they'll wanna come out and inspect all that, so.
And I can give you that phone number.
Okay, thank you.
So for more information, for a connection to the highway, I wanna see what they say about your soil. Um I'm willing to to make the motion to table it.
Water availability.
Water availability. And so I made the motion, seconded by Donna McIntyre. All in favor of uh tabling this until we get more information from Mr. Ruder?
He comes back and we see a plan.
Yeah, we see a plan.
See you got a plan.
So you wanna see all the units?
I would love to see the units drawn out, sir, that would be great. Where you're asking.
Physician?
Yeah, you're asking us to make a decision and we haven't even seen a drawing yet.
But right, and now you mentioned, where were you planning on getting water? Because I don't think city water does.
There's city water.
City water shops.
There's a.
The the water company did speak to John Reeves about, about this, they're running the pipe all the way up to the house, so.
It's also near the side of the road, and it's a fortune to get in.
Did you get a septic from the water company that shows you've got water?
Yeah.
The.
They'll give you.
They'll give you a water.
No, you'll have to have them come out and take a look at it and see what, how like, how you route water to that property.
So it doesn't currently have water to it?
It has water.
It does?
The property has water.
Well, I meant, is it attached to the house?
It's a Phillips Road, as I recall.
I put the water line in, I placed across the line of the highway, that's the last house, and it's got public security.
So I guess the the short answer is we're gonna table until you come back with a lot more information. And the highlights are the things that I've mentioned, the road, the soil. Uh speak to the water department, speak to the transportation, uh Seymour Division. And give me a drawing of some kind, so I know what's gonna be sitting there, and then we can look at it and make the decision.
A letter from the water company showing it has water.
Uh either that or that they can make you, they can make it active. Yeah.
Or this thing is, if you're building seven units in there, you gotta have a sprinkler system, and if you wanna build more units, that's gonna increase it. So you gotta put in all the plants for all them units all the time, and a three-quarter pipe won't handle all that.
I think residential is a half inch for, for, uh, right, it's half inch for a residential home, and I think it's three-quarter for it.
Yeah, residential's one.
Right, right, I know, but, right, thanks, Dan.
Or not, or not, or table on it until we can get the information. It's not a, it's not a done deal. I mean, it's, it's table for a month and we'll, we'll see what you come out with.
How do you know we're just seeing more information?
Just for the.
Yes, sir.
I would, I would suggest that, uh, is it, is this where?
Right.
Is there ever, I would suggest you would, I would, because I would, there's a major problem out there, I don't wanna get hit something. I know it goes, I think almost to right, down across the center of the property. I know, I know in some of our emergencies that that's been, you know, they had, we've had a couple trains.
We we need to take.
Down the center of my.
Hold on.
Yeah, it's right there, right about that high line, I think, right there, the super high thing, right there. Uh it starts right there, goes further across the fields, and then go across there, it's a, it's a, it's a major line that goes further to the car. Um the only, you know, the rest of it goes further to car, and I thought it might from like Mount Carmel, well, it's away. Yeah, that's, yeah, it's, yeah, it's, it's that train, like, where it was major, where they chose, you know, the show.
Yeah, I mean, but for us, though, I I'm just looking at it just kind of gauging where the, where the property could be. I mean, all the activity would really be on the top though.
To to the north of it.
Yeah, it would be the north of it.
And then, and then, and then, probably just.
Gentlemen, gentlemen.
Right, absolutely.
I need to take a vote here. And we, we're tabling, so we can have this discussion at the next one. Uh that was a second by Mike Swafford, by the way.
Okay, okay.
And then, or no, Donna Mc, uh she, she seconded, I'm sorry. I've I've lost my place on the vote. Okay, all in favor of table on this for more information, which we have uh told Mr. Ruder? So. Six oh? Mr. Ruder, I wish you well, sir, and I, I'm looking forward to seeing what you come back with.
Thank you.
Got your plate full.
Yeah.
You did miss a second there.
What do we miss?
The minutes?
Reading is.
All right.
I forgot about that, I'm sure.
Okay.
I'm sure you used.
I've gotta jump back up to whole business, or actual approval of the minute, gentle, uh votes from the April the nineteenth meeting. I would entertain a motion to, okay? We got uh Donna and Bill, all in favor of the minutes from the April eighteenth meeting, raise a hand. Six oh? Okay, sorry about that. Public comments. Got anything, Victor?
We're gonna run a lot off.
Seeing none, plan commission comments, seeing none, motion to the jury.
Motion.
Second move.